Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Gary County Council Meeting, June the 5th, 2018, within a 6:00 PM hour. I will ask everyone if you will please stand for the prayer and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Moore will lead us in our prayer this evening.
Our God, our Father in Heaven, the God who is the joy of our salvation, the God who sits high and looks low, the God who sends blessings down to those who are here and those who are elsewhere. Oh, God, we thank you for this, another opportunity to assemble here in these chambers to do the business of your city. We pray, oh, God, that you will open hearts and open minds, that we will be receptive to discussion, debate, oh, God, and that the result will be that we will agree on things that will move this city forward. We pray, oh, God, that we will not allow obstacles to hinder us from making progress, that we will look beyond those obstacles, our God, Heavenly Father, and look to our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, who has the answer. And we pray, oh, God, that we will keep hope alive as we go forward. We pray, oh, God, for each councilperson, each city administrator, that they will be crowned with wisdom as they go forth. And then, oh, God, we ask your blessings now, and not only on those who are here, but on those under the sound of my voice. Bless all of, each of us, oh, God, in a mighty way. Bless the sick, bless the shut-in, bless those who are bereaving the loss of loved ones. Send comfort and peace, our Heavenly Father. And we are all going to be careful to give you the praise, to give you the glory as we go forth. In the mighty and gracious name of Jesus Christ, our Lord, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, where liberty and justice thrive.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, for the prayer. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out to the council meeting this evening at the IUN Berlin Hall Auditorium, which we are inside of the 6th District, Councilwoman Sparks Way's district. And we're happy to see that if you want to have pressed their way out, even though the sun was shining earlier, it seemed like old men winters trying to come back on. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Brown.
Present.
Councilwoman Caldwell.
Here.
Councilwoman Hatcher. Councilwoman Proto. Councilwoman Rogers.
Present.
Councilwoman Smith.
Here.
Councilwoman Sparks Way.
Here.
Councilwoman Wyatt.
Present.
President Brewer.
Here.
Mr. President, seven present, two absent.
With seven present, two absent, we do have a quorum to conduct the business of the City of Gary. There are no minutes at this time, minutes will be taken up at the next council meeting. Council Pen and Orders and Resolution on First Reading.
CPL 2018-19, in order to meaning Title 15 and Title Land Usage, Chapter 123, Title Zoning Code, of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Gary, Indiana, petitioner Christina Wagner, 38 East Grand U Drive, South Holland, Illinois, property at 4272 West 21st Avenue, Gary, Indiana.
Plan.
CPL 2018-20, in order to meaning Title 15 and Title Land Usage, Chapter 123, Title Zoning Code, of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Gary, Indiana, petitioner Mohammed Alazay, 723, James Wilchin Drive, Sherrville, Indiana, property at 4545 Broadway, Gary, Indiana.
Plan.
CPL 2018-21, in order to approving a transfer of funds between departments within Funds 212 and 213, Home Grant and Emergency Solutions Grant, sponsored by Mayor Karen Freeman-Wilson, City of Gary Angela Hayes, Angela Hayes, City Controller, Community Development Division, Department of Commerce.
Finance.
CPO 2018-22, in order to approving a transfer of fund within Fund 855 Blight Elimination Fund, sponsored by Mayor Karen Freeman-Wilson, City of Gary Angela Hayes, City Controller, Community Development Division, Department of Commerce.
Finance.
Mr. President, it is assignment of any ordinances and resolutions.
You.
Mr. President.
Councilman Smith.
The Planning Committee has before it CPO 2018-19. For the record, I approve this ordinance for reporting out to the council. Councilwoman Rogers.
Yes.
Councilwoman Barnes Caldwell.
Yes.
Mr. President, the majority of the committee has approved the ordinance for reporting out to the council. Mr. President, the committee would like to report out the following ordinance or numbers. CPO 2018-19 and CPO 2018-20.
I didn't do 20.
I didn't do 20?
No.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I'm trying to get ahead of myself. Okay, Mr. President, the Planning Committee has before it CPO 2018-20. For the record, I approve this ordinance for reporting out to the council. Councilwoman Rogers.
Yes.
Councilwoman Barnes Caldwell.
Yes.
Mr. President, the Planning Committee has reported out the following, CPO 2018-19 and CPO 2018-20 to the council.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Brown.
The Finance Committee has before it CPO 2018-21. For the record, I approve this ordinance for reporting out to the council. Councilwoman Caldwell.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Smith.
Yes.
Mr. President, majority of the Finance Committee has approved CPO 2018-21 for reporting out to the council. The Finance Committee has before it CPO 2018-22. For the record, I approve this ordinance for reporting out to the council. Councilwoman Caldwell.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Smith.
Yes.
Mr. President, majority of the Finance Committee has approved CPO 2018-22 for reporting out to the council.
At this time, I can have you all to report the numbers out this time.
Mr. President.
Councilman Smith.
The Planning Committee reports out CPO 2018-19 and CPO 2018-20.
Mr. President, the Finance Committee would like to report out CPO 2018-21 and 2018-22.
Thank you. At this time, we would move to special select by any councilman at this time.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Wyatt.
I'd like to announce a 1st District Community Meeting, who will be held on Monday, June 25th, at 6:00 PM, at the Marquette Park Pavilion, lower level. We will have Matty Fitzgerald from Recycling, and also Brenda Scott Henry from Green Urbanism. And I expect that we'll have someone from Code Enforcement as well. Everyone is welcome, and again, at 6:00 PM on Monday, June 25th, at Marquette Park Pavilion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Brown.
The 3rd District would like to announce a 5x5x5 cleanup meeting on June 11th, Monday, June 11th, at 5:30 PM at Tolston Pavilion. And that's not our regular meeting, and I want to emphasize that so that those persons who normally come to our meetings will understand that this is a special meeting. So it will be on Monday, June 11th, from 5:30 to 6:30 at Tolston Pavilion, and the topic of discussion will be the 5x5x5 cleanup in the 3rd District. The following people are invited, 3rd District residents, and City of Gary departments, building code enforcement demolition, Gary Sanitary District, General Services, Green Urbanism, Health, Parks, Leasing Fire, Recycling, Traffic, and more. So sponsored by the City of Gary Constituent Services. So I look forward to seeing residents of the 3rd District, or anyone else who would like to come and help us in our 5x5x5 cleanup in the 3rd District. And I'd also like to make mention of the fact that we have a new business in the 3rd District. It is a carryout restaurant. It's called That's Good Chicken. And I want to tell you that it is good chicken. And it's a small, it's just a small place. It's at 2935 West 15th Avenue. It's near Tolston Park. You get a chance, please stop by. They don't have late hours. Their hours are Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, from 10:30 AM to 7:00 PM, and Sundays from 11:30 to 5:30, and they're closed on Wednesdays. But the food is good. It is, that is good chicken. So get a chance, stop by. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah. That is good.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Rogers.
Thank you. The 4th District, the next 4th District Community Meeting will be held on June 21st, from 5:30 to 7:30 at James Reed Park Pavilion, 15th and Pennsylvania Street. Invited guests are the Gary Park Department and the Gary Redevelopment Department, and there is a possibility we may be able to get Youth Services Bureau there as well. That meeting, June 21st, 5:30 to 7:30, James Reed Park Pavilion. I have been speaking about the old Stocking Factory, which is the Bear Brand site on East 21st and Massachusetts Street. And so we've had several community meetings about, with partners who receive grants to do something special at that site. And so we're having a Community Volunteer Day to clean the perimeter of the Gary brand, Bear Brand site, the old Stocking Factory. That will be on Saturday, June 23rd, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM, 205 East 21st Avenue. And again, we will, we're asking for volunteers that live near the site and in the 4th District, and as Councilwoman Brown said, anyone who wishes to come out and help us with these cleanups. That will be held June 23rd, 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. If you have any questions regarding either the meeting or the Volunteer Day cleanup, please give my office a call at 881-1315. I would like to take the opportunity to thank WLTH and the Williams family, friends, and staff. They did an excellent job on Saturday, this past Saturday. They believe that Martin Luther King Drive should be a street that is clear of debris, that looks nice, and that represents Dr. Martin Luther King. And so that street, it's just so disheartening for people to throw trash out, and that's really anywhere in the city, but when you're throwing trash out and you're throwing furniture out. We want to clean Martin Luther King Drive. They started this past Saturday, and they've worked their self, they have worked their way up to the post office, right there, right before the tracks, and so we're going to continue down Martin Luther King Drive, all the way to Ridge Road, actually. And so this is an opportunity, and this is something that WLTH will be doing until the job gets done. And so I want to personally thank them for the invite and for coming up with this wonderful plan. I also want to thank our president, who also was there, as well as the director, the deputy director, well, I guess he would be the director of General Services Department, was there as well. And just want to get involved, and I'm asking for residents to get involved, and I'm asking for residents in the district to get your name on the mailing list, to be a part of the solution, to come out with your great ideas, I know you have them, to assist us and to help us clean the city up, and to provide a better quality of life for residents in the, in the district and in the city. Now, the WLTH, they're going to be doing their next cleanup on Martin Luther King on June 23rd, 8:00 AM to noon. I will get back with you regarding the exact location that they're going to be at, but if you have any questions, of course, you're welcome to call WLTH. And yesterday, I had a meeting regarding the old Stocking Factory. I want to thank Pastor Dwight Gartner for his gracious hospitality. We meet at the church every time we meet regarding this. And just want to acknowledge the couple of precinct committee persons that came out to that meeting yesterday, Darryl Ross, G415, and Sandra Porter, G49. The Journey and Truth House Walkathon is an annual walk that will be held June 9th at 410 West 13th Avenue. The walk kicks off at 9:00 AM. As you know, it is a homeless shelter for women, children, and men, actually. They've just built a beautiful facility on 11th Avenue, and so they will be having their annual fundraising fundraiser, which would be Saturday, June 9th. Check in at 8:00, the walk kicks off at 9:00 AM. There will be booths there, vendors will be there, they will be providing fruit and water and juice for the participants of the walk. The YWCA has a summer camp, 2018, the registration is now open for children. If you have any questions, you can call the YWCA. That is a summer camp, 2018. There is no better place for kids to make friends, have fun, and learn new skills. If you have any questions regarding that, please call 881-9922. And finally, I had some concerns about the Maya Co. project, and I sent an email to the administration requesting information. When we met with the company last year, what I indicated was that because there were so many questions, there were some things that were not finalized, that I would be having another meeting this year to see what the progress is. And I believe it was the last meeting, the Chief of Staff indicated that the meeting would be held on the 4th of June, yesterday, and at 5:30, but she did not give a location. And so, of course, June 4th has come and gone, and I'm still requesting that information. Are they still at the bank building? Are they still a part of this mega project that was rolled out by the Redevelopment Department? Exactly what is going on with Maya Co., with all of these properties, and properties, I'm told, more properties in the 4th District than anywhere. So I'm still waiting patiently for that information. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Mr. President. The 5th District had our monthly community meeting last night, and our special guests were the state police. They came in and gave us a lot of that very valuable information. Please join us for our next community meeting, which will be July the 9th. And our special guest will be Constituent Services, LaShawn Brooks. And we will be discussing our 5x5x5, which will be held in the month of July. So please come out, Roosevelt Pavilion, 21st and Harrison Street at 5:30. That's Monday, July the 9th. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Wyatt. I'd like to go first. And that the record shows, Councilwoman Proto has joined us also. Councilwoman Wyatt.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I would like to say congratulations to my son, who finished the 8th grade today. At Bannaker School. And Mrs. Givens, who has been the principal for at least the last 28, 29 years, will no longer be the principal at Bannaker School. They're moving her to Marquette. So a great woman of God, who has led that school tremendously over the past several years, and moved that school to a blue ribbon, five-star school, the only one in the City of Gary. And we just need to say thank you to her and commend her for a job well done. Secondly, we have a cleanup coming on this coming Saturday at 9 o'clock AM. We will be cleaning Lewalas High School once again. Everyone who lives in that district, please come out, help us clean up Lewalas High School. We will start at 9:00, and we will finish at 12:30. We are celebrating the reopening of the post office in the 6th District, the one on 40th Avenue, that will be reopening this summer. It will be, they're planning for either August 6th or August 13th, but I will let you guys know. And, let's see, the 6th District Community Meeting will be held on June 14th at 5:30 at Howe Park, and our guests will be Chief Bradley, and Chief Bradley of the Fire Department, and who else? I forgot. Somebody else from the Fire Department? Um, okay, can't think of it right now. Got to bring two more going on. Okay, and finally, the reason why I did not stand for the Pledge of Allegiance today, I intentionally sat, and I want to explain that. I am not a proponent of a lot of protests in that manner, because I understand both sides. I understand the dedication of our armed forces, those military men and women who have given so much to our country. I honor them with everything that I am, because if it were not for them, we would not be able to sit right here and do what we do on a daily basis without fear of retribution from administration or higher powers. The reason why I sat down was because of the actions of our president in his disinviting the Philadelphia Eagles to the White House. And it is, it's disappointing, because the very first amendment of our Constitution is that of a right to free speech. However you express yourself in America, you should be able to do so, standing, sitting, waving your hand, not saying a mumbling word. Whatever it is that you want to do in America, you should be able to do it and express your free speech. And so his disinvitation, I think, is a slap in the face to those who have died for our right to say whatever we want to say, whenever we want to say it. And since we were in the 6th District, and since he just did another, what would I call it? Another slap in the face to the Constitution, because he wants to block the Twitter friends that he has when they disagree with something that he says. And when he became president, guess what? He have a right to free speech. And the company would not allow him, as a matter of fact, the judge, they went and they sued to be able to say whatever they want to say on his public Twitter account. The right to free speech is the most important amendment to our Constitution, and I would hope that all of us have engaged and will continue to engage in a conversation about just that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Smith.
Yes, sir. Mr. President. Okay, I only have one brief announcement for today, and it's from Calls for Paws, Inc. of Gary. They would like to announce that they're having a Pet and People Health Fair, Sunday, June 24th, 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, at Marquette Park Pavilion. They also will be hosting a Best Dressed Up Pet Parade. So if you are a dog lover like me, or an animal lover, you might want to go to this. I'll be there, and I'm going to dress my little buttons up. We're going to fix him up. He might not like it, but we're going to do it anyway, too. But yeah, they're going to be doing, hosting pet and, pet and pet owners' blood pressure and diabetes screening, tips and tricks to improve health, healthy eating habits, spray, neuter registration, low-cost vaccinations, microchip service, and more. So like I said, if you are a pet owner, and you think you got a cute one, bring one out, enjoy yourself. And that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
Councilman. Councilman Proto.
Thank you. Second District will have a brief discussion on the Clock Road Reconstruction Project meeting, Tuesday, June 12th, at the Broswick Pavilion, at 5:30. And Dan Recari, Director of Sanitary District, would be the special guest to explain those procedures for that project that's going to take place pretty soon. And the second thing is on June the 14th, at the Hudson Campbell, the Ambridge Park Purification Project Meeting will take place. Nathaniel George, our Director of the Park Department, will be our special guest, along with Brenda Scott Henry, Green Urbanism Director. And our special guest would be Rick Hasser from 21st Century School. He's the director at that school, and they're trying to do a, in fact, they're not going to try, but we're going to do a partnership together with working at that park, because they plan to use that park next year for their home baseball and softball games. So we're going to meet to discuss that project as we go along. And I do want to say one thing about that flag. I thought about what, with Councilwoman was speaking, and how my dad had fought in World War II, and it took him 63 years after the war to receive his medals. He received five medals from the war, and he was very angry about it. And he had a lot of disrespect for that flag after that happened. So I can understand too. Thank you.
Well, I'll just say, Councilwoman Sparks Way started talking about her son there, so I think my daughter, she's watching, she'll say, what about her? (laughter) Well, my daughter did graduate from 8th grade also, so she graduated from the Phil Bowman Middle School. She will be attending for four years, and it's saying four years, that's coming very quickly, 2022. Both of our kids will be coming out of school there, and we know that time will go by very yours also.
Yes, yes, yes.
So we all will be celebrating together, paying out together. But I found out some more good news today. My daughter, she didn't know it, and we got a call from the school today letting us know that our daughter is number two in her class. She's very close to being number one, but she's number two. (applause) Talking about that made me feel very good inside. So I want to express my congratulations to my daughter, and a job well done. At this time, Council Pen and Orders and Resolution on Third and Final.
CPO 2018-18, in order to revise and appropriations for 2018 salary and operating budgets, special revenue and grant funds in the City of Gary. Special Revenue and Grand Funds in the City of Gary, sponsored by Mayor Karen Freeman-Wilson, City of Gary, Angela Hayes, City Controller.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Brown?
I move for passage of CPO 2018-18 on Third and Final Reading.
Move properly, second. Over to you at this time.
Should have started my way over here a little earlier. Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council, and to the members of the public. This involves some modifications to three budgets. One is the Department of Recycling, one is the Department of Information Technology, and the last is the Safe and Thriving Communities Grants. And the Department of Recycling, they are requesting to remove a CDL driver position from the salary budget in the amount of $32,025. It will be transferred to the recycling department's operating budget, and it will be used to purchase more large recycling bins and to make repairs for the recycling trucks. Within the last couple of years, and I know this from the time that I've been on WLTH, there have been, there has been a larger request for the large recycling bins. I think that the increase in the request is really evidence of the fact that we're recycling more. And if it's done as it should be, you will have more refus in your large recycling bin than you will have in your solid waste container. So that's a challenge to the members of the public, but this is a great opportunity. The recycling department has four routes daily. There are five drivers that cover those four routes, and the recycling department also has a helper, which assists the drivers and the foreman, who collects the recycling and the brown bags daily. And this will allow the department to increase their service to the community. In addition to that, there is a request from the IT Department, that IT requests are, there is a secret server, is a password management system that allows you to securely store, organize, and manage privileged account information and passwords. So they would be allowed to be acquired this technology. It creates a security layer to protect against cyber attacks that use privilege, that use these privileged accounts. One of our cybersecurity defense systems, the funds are coming from the IT Airport Support Contract. And that is, the IT Department has a fee-for-service contract with the airport for IT. The last modification is from the Safe and Thriving Communities Grant. You may recall that this was a grant that was actually obtained in partnership with the Pop on Violence, that is the organization that is led by Dr. Michael McGee. And they initially led the grant. The grant required, or justice required, that the city be the administrator for the grant, but the first year is a planning grant. The last two years are implementation, and it targets youth violence prevention. And what it essentially does is that it works to get all of the entities that are engaged in youth violence prevention, whether it is the YWCA, the Youth Services Bureau, the Boys and Girls Club, Gary for Life, a variety of entities that are engaged in youth violence prevention. It allows us, POP as an entity, allows us to coordinate those efforts and ensure that we are really working together. In this case, the grant's objective also is to intervene and deter youth from gang and gun violence, and it uses evidence-based practices. One of the latest evidence-based practices that's recognized by the Department of Justice that we introduced into the city is the 10-point coalition. And in fact, we are featured in the Department of Justice's latest newsletter as introducing the 10-point coalition to the city. The original budget was changed to reflect the positions of Administrative Assistant and Project Coordinator, which were actually moved from the salaries and wages position to professional services. The thinking is that if you have a salary, then you're actually increasing the fringe benefits as well. And the position of Project Coordinator, Director, was added as a line item to the salaries and wages to account for the time of our Director of Gary for Life, who will also be managing the overall scope of the project, chairing the Steering Committee, and providing advice relative to group violence intervention methodology. And she will also be attending the project meetings. So those are the changes, and we would ask that you would in fact pass the budget, or the revised budget. Any questions?
Any question, councilmembers? Thank you, Mayor. At this time, public portion is open for anyone who'd like to speak for, against. 2018-18.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Jim Noack. I live in the 2nd District. And long I criticize the waste that we see in our grant projects, grant budgets. And foremost in that is the fact that while we'll have an overview on the changes to these budgets, there's actually, you cannot actually rely that any of that is going to be factual, or that the results are going to be anything remotely resembling what's been represented in the overviews. Wonderful example of that would be, would be issues regarding the special revenue for the Fire Department, the EMS service. Very clearly, the council had, had an understanding for what was going to happen with those millions of dollars, and had taken action very similar to what you're going to be doing today. You voted on something and authorized the administration to do as a council, and of course, that's your responsibility. You control the purse strings in the city. But the administration had other ideas. She, some idea popped into the administration's head, and she decided she was going to set off in some other direction and dam the council. And same things going, we see the same thing here. We see, for instance, and in other, and in other projects, like one of the council members mentioned the Mayaco. And the administration, with great fanfare, announced this lofty initiative to, Richard Daley's going to come in, he's going to help save the city, and represented all sorts of things. The council didn't even get to weigh in on that. Do you remember that? All of this was done in the background, and the council didn't even weigh in on it. And now the administration comes before the council and says, "We're going to have a meeting on May 4th," or June 4th, rather. And I was at City Council, or City Hall. I didn't see any notices for it. I don't know that I was looking for that particularly, but I would have thought that if the administration's going to represent that to the council, that maybe the administration would hold herself accountable to the council. Of course, we don't see that. So while it's wonderful to have these, all the platitudes about what we're going to see with these grant money, the evidence is clear to anybody in the city. This grant money gets wasted, this money, this grant money gets misspent, this grant money is off books. Nobody pays any attention after you've given your approval for these things, and the results, of course, are clear and evident. Thank you.
Thank you.
So go to the board for it.
Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Happy Post Memorial Day to everybody. On the recycling stuff, when I'm on the cleanup committee, that Francis Bush and Ron Brewer chair, and on the recycling, I have to support it, because we get like 443,000 from the Solid Waste Department in Lake County to do our recycling here in Gary, which certainly isn't enough money. And I think they do a pretty decent job with what they have to deal with. They have drivers, they have pickups, they do it regularly. The problem I have with the state Indiana and our country is we don't have enough money allocated toward recycling throughout our country. Italy, they dispose of about 640 pounds of trash, household trash, per individual. Japan, about 520. Indiana's about six, what is it, 3,650 pounds of trash, household trash per each individual, 6.6 million of us. We produce more trash per individual in the state Indiana than any other state in the country, and certainly most developed countries in the world. So I want to see the state and the county and the national government get on board with this more. Second of all, all these mega corporations, the Dollar Tree that owns Family Dollar, now the McDonald's of the world, the businesses, the mega businesses that operate in Gary, and they're still here, because quite frankly, they make money. So does Walgreens and CVS. They're multi-billion dollar companies that are buying 48, like, they're buying 48 million, billion-dollar insurance companies, so on and so forth. I'd like to see these folks get on board, these businesses that we have left, to help out some. And I think that we have to call that to our attention. We don't have pickups in a lot of the public housing. Some of the public housing, we get recycling. We have a number of apartment complexes in Gary. They don't get serviced, because I guess they haven't come to an agreement with the city on how to deal with it. But I'd like to see the national and state and local government, beyond the city's resources, get more involved in this recycling deal. But I have to say, it seems to be a pretty effective program for the people that participate. And I'm all for more cans. People need to have more of the red cans and use them, and know how to sort the stuff out. And I think people want to recycle when they're taught to. And I think the government should also have a program to reward the citizens that recycle. Like for different commodities, you get 2 cents for this, 5 cents for that. Some states actually do have on the bottles and containers a small stipend. Like when I was a youngster, you could get 2 cents for returning a pop bottle, for example. And the glass can be cleaned, you know, the wasn't damaged, or it could be remelted again. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, public portion is now closed. Any further discussion from councilmembers? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell?
Yes.
Councilman Proto?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rogers?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sparksway?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wyatt?
Yes.
And President Brewer?
Yes.
Mr. President, the vote is eight to zero.
With a vote of eight to zero, CPO 2018-18 has passed on Third and Final, and so order.
CPR 2018-05, A Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Gary, Indiana, Approving the Bylaws of the Port Authority of Gary, Indiana, sponsored by Mayor Karen Freeman-Wilson, City of Gary.
Mr. President, I move to defer CPR 2018-05.
Second.
And move properly, second, to defer CPR 2018-05. Roll call on the third.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell?
Yes.
Councilman Proto?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rogers?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sparksway?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wyatt?
Yes.
And President Brewer?
Yes.
Mr. President, the vote is eight to zero.
With a vote of eight to zero, CPR 2018-05 has been deferred, and so ordered.
Mr. President, it's Penning Orders and Resolutions on Third.
Council Pen and Orders and Resolution on Second Reading.
CPR 2018-19, An Onus Meaning Title 15, Entitled Land Uses, Chapter 123, Entitled Zoning Code of the Code of Ordnances of the City of Gary, Indiana, Petitioner Christina Buckner, 38 East Grandview Drive, South Holland, Illinois, Property of 4272, West 21st Avenue of Gary, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Council Smith?
I move for passage of CPR 2018-19 on Second Reading, with a public hearing, I mean, with the Planning Committee hearing on June 12th at 5:30 p.m., and a public hearing of 6:19 at 6:00 p.m.
Second.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Brown?
I'm sorry, what time? Did he say 5:30?
5:30.
5:30.
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell?
Yes.
Councilman Proto?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rogers?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sparksway?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wyatt?
Yes.
And President Brewer?
Yes.
Mr. President, the vote is eight to zero.
With a vote of eight to zero, CPR 2018-19 is moving to the Planning Committee. That'll be June 12th, 2018, at 5:30 p.m., and a public hearing will be June 19th at 6:00 p.m.
CPR 2018-20, An Onus Meaning Title 15, Entitled Land Uses, Chapter 123, Entitled Zoning Code of the Code of Ordnances of the City of Gary, Indiana, Petitioner Mohammed Alazah, 723 James Wilchin Drive, Sherrville, Indiana, Property of 4545 Broadway, Gary, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Council Smith?
I move for passage of CPR 2018-20 on Second Reading, with a Planning Committee hearing on June 12th at 5:30 p.m., and a public hearing on June 19th at 6:00 p.m.
Second.
Move properly, second. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell?
Yes.
Councilman Proto?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rogers?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sparksway?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wyatt?
Yes.
And President Brewer?
Yes.
Mr. President, the vote is eight to zero.
With a vote of eight to zero, CPR 2018-20 is moving to the Planning Committee, June 12th, 2018, at 5:30 p.m., and a public hearing, June 19th, at 6:00 p.m.
CPR 2018-21, An Onus Approving a Transfer of Funds Between Departments Within Funds 212 and 213, Home Grant and Emergency Solutions Grant, Sponsored by Mayor Karen Freeman-Wilson, City of Gary, Angela Hayes, City Controller, Community Development Division, Department of Commerce.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Brown?
I move for passage of CPR 2018-21 on Second Reading, Finance Committee Meeting on Tuesday, June 12th at 5:45 p.m., and a public hearing on June 19th.
Second.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell?
Yes.
Councilman Proto?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rogers?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sparksway?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wyatt?
Yes.
And President Brewer?
Yes.
Mr. President, the vote is eight to zero.
With a vote of eight to zero, CPR 2018-21 is moving to the Finance Committee, June 12th, 2018, at 5:45, and a public hearing, June 19th, at 6:00 p.m.
CPR 2018-22, An Onus Approving a Transfer of Funds Within Fund 855 Light Illumination Fund, Sponsored by Mayor Karen Freeman-Wilson, City of Gary, Angela Hayes, City Controller, Community Development Division, Department of Commerce.
Mr. President, I move for passage of CPR 2018-22 on Second Reading, Finance Committee Meeting on Tuesday, June 12th, at 5:45 p.m., Public Hearing on June 19th.
Second.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell?
Yes.
Councilman Proto?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rogers?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sparksway?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wyatt? Councilwoman Wyatt?
Yes.
And President Brewer?
Yes.
Mr. President, vote is eight to zero.
With a vote of eight to zero, CPR 2018-22 is moving to the finance committee, June the 12, 2018 at 5:45, and a public hearing, June the 19 at 6:00 PM.
Mr. President, plenty ordinances and resolutions on second reading.
At this time, we would have the mayor report at this time.
Good evening again, Mr. President and members of the council, as well as members of the public. First, I want to extend my condolences to the Patterson family, which is my family, on the loss, my cousin Rosalyn Wright and her brothers, her brother Dwayne, on the loss of their father, my uncle Lee Ernest Patterson, also known as Uncle Buck. And I want to also thank the folks at the Sojourner Truth House for the opportunity to be an honorary chair on the Sojourner Truth House while Councilwoman Rogers gave the date, but that is Saturday, June 9. And you can sign up bright and early at 8 o'clock, we will have a city team. I also want to announce that our staff, or yeah, the city, has been the recipients of a Kresge Planning Grant relative to environmental efforts, and we're excited about that. A team went to Detroit for the first planning session, and that is all covered by the grant. I want to congratulate the graduates of the class of 2018. I had the honor of speaking at the Bowman graduation where Langston Stallings was the valedictorian. And I just want to note that the, a number of scholarships he's received thus far, it's over $600,000. Now, he won't be able to use all of them because some of them are full rides. For instance, he got a full ride to Butler, he got a full ride to Valparaiso. He also is the recipient of the Lilly Scholarship, which pays full tuition for four years. His final choice was Valparaiso, but he is the captain of the basketball team, I believe also the baseball team, as well as clearly a scholar. So I thought that was commendable. And one of the things that was noteworthy to me was that they have a ceremony where they pass the baton from the number one student in 2018 this year to the number one student in the class of 2019. They were both young men. So, you know, I just wanted to commend that. I'm looking forward to speaking. I spoke at the Bowman graduation. I will also be speaking on Friday at the Roosevelt graduation, and we will be attending the Worth Emerson graduation on Friday as well. And I think I'm scheduled to take a picture with the Westside graduates, but on the occasion of the Roosevelt graduation, this is our class's 40th anniversary. So we're looking forward to participating with the graduates on Friday evening. I want to thank the Gary Patriotic Association for their Memorial Day parade and memorial service. And it was a hot day, but they were in full uniform, many of them, and certainly did a great job, both in the parade and in Buffington Harbor. Want to thank our general services and park staffs and all of the volunteers who helped them prepare Buffington Park for that. Today, we had a lunch and learn workshop with the U.S. Government, U.S. Communities Organization, which is a government purchasing alliance in an effort to reduce the purchasing costs across sectors and across governmental units. It is a project that both the United States Conference of Mayors, the National League of Cities, the National Association of Counties participate in, and it is a cost savings mechanism across those organizations. Today, I was involved with the census validation, as was, I understand, Councilwoman Brown, and I don't know how many others of you have been involved, but there's still a few days left. So it's a very easy process, and it really is eye-opening. And what we're doing is validating addresses in the city to assure or improve the accuracy of counting. On Saturday, the NAACP had their 53rd Annual Life Membership Banquet at the Genesis Center. And I just want to first commend the NAACP on an excellent banquet. It, we hosted the Honorable Gonzalo Curial, who actually issued the order preventing the immigration. It was a part of the president's immigration decision. He stayed the order that would have resulted in significant difficulty relative to the immigration statute in the country. We also welcomed Loretta Lynch, who was the former Attorney General, and they both engaged in great remarks and then had a wonderful conversation. And I would be remiss if I did not add that Attorney General Lynch is a Delta, also my line sister, and that Gonzalo, Judge Gonzalo Curial is a Kappa, and he and Steve Mays were on related lines on the same year. So it was, it was a nice event. We also want to acknowledge the groundbreaking of the new Goodwill campus. It's an $8 million project that will involve a retail store as well as an Excel Center, which is a dropout recovery program. The applications are now available for the Independence Day Parade, which will be held on July 4. We're gonna do 25th Avenue again this year. We thought it was a great route. And you can get the invitations online on the city's website, as well as teamgaryindiana.com or at the citizen service desk if you want to get a paper copy. There will be a Myaco community meeting that will involve an update from both Myaco and city staff, and that will be held Friday, June 15 at the Roosevelt Pavilion at 5:00 PM. We were originally scheduled, and I think it was mentioned earlier for yesterday, at 5:30 or 7:00 PM, and we thought that originally there was a community meeting scheduled, a fifth district community meeting scheduled. And we did not want to have two meetings back to back. We thought that the Myaco project warranted enough attention to have a standalone meeting. And so that is going to be held on June 15, Friday, June 15 at 5:00 PM. Wanted to update the council. We had our second meeting with the State Board of Accounts regarding the discrepancy with the Fund 224 and the bank account, that is the EMS fund. They were able to ask additional questions. They have not made a final decision rather as to whether they will come in and do a separate audit. We have shared our methodology. We've also shared with them that the reconciliation of all related funds in the Bank 10, which is where the Fund 224 was held, will be done by the end of June. Once that happens, I think they will be in a position to make a final determination. They are going to begin their 2017 audit shortly. And after that final audit of 224 is done, we will have two sets of meetings. The first will be a meeting with firefighters, and we're contemplating six meetings so that we can cover two meetings per shift because we know that they work in three separate shifts. In addition to that, we are going to have a meeting with the public, or a public meeting to talk about the overall financial plan. And these meetings are all contemplated to be in June. And then, we do have a date, and I'm not, I believe it's the 15th, but I don't want to give the wrong date, but there is a meeting that will be held with the family of Kamante Cobb. Actually, it's gonna be the 19th. And that meeting is going to be held in the boardroom. It will involve the Lake County Prosecutor, who engaged in the investigation, along with representatives of the Gary Police Department. I've also issued an invitation to members of the council, the family, and representatives from Black Lives Matter. I think that concludes my report. If there are any additional questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
And so, any questions from the council members at this time for the mayor?
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Rogers?
Thank you. I've been asked about utility work that's going on, on East 21st Avenue. Residents are asking me about that, Virginia Street to, I believe, Dory Miller Marshalltown. Do, do we have any information on what that's all about?
That is, is that a question for me?
Yes.
Okay. Because you asked, Mr. President, and I wasn't sure. That, that is actually lateral main replacements and main replacements that are being done by Indiana American Water. We understand that the notices that they are required and that they agreed that they would provide to residents were not initially given. We have, since that time, communicated with them and asked them to ensure that those notices are given to residents. In addition to that, unbeknownst to us, we are engaged in a sewer project on Lake Street. GSD had not even mobilized, but we gave Indiana American Water notice of that. And when we provided that notice, they went in and started a main replacement that has wreaked havoc. So it's something that needed to be done. It's something that should have been better coordinated. So we are aware of that and have been working with them to address that project as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Wade?
On, let's see, I think it might have been the first meeting in May, maybe, maybe not, but it was one of the meetings that you weren't present, Madam Mayor, that Dana Bennett stated that we would know something in regards to when firefighters will be able to be hired by the first of June. And we are here at the first of June, and I would like to know when we will be able to hire those 26 firefighters, or one or two of the 26 that are waiting to be hired.
Thank you for reminding me of that. We're prepared at this time to hire six of those 26 firefighters, and we will provide updates as the finances provide. But at this time, we are prepared to hire six of those 26.
Okay, great. Thank you. And secondly, what time is the Kamante Cobb meeting?
The meeting is on, is at 2:30.
Okay. And I'm sure Mr. Tyrone Jackson would be happy to hear, because he's back with his daughter. Could you have her to stand up? She is so adorable. He's one of the firefighters who is a, well, I'm sorry, he is a recruit, and he was here at the last meeting and gave a very passionate, gave a very passionate speech. And he is a resident of Gary, and I certainly hope that this young man definitely is hired within those six folk, because he's stuck it out and made the sacrifices. Thank you, Mr. President.
Is there anyone else?
Yes.
Councilman Prothel?
Mayor, I was, but some people can really try to make money. I was approached by some of the neighbors in my block, and they were telling me that this house has been on demolition list probably for about the last 15 years. People have been coming back talking about purchasing the houses, that they had been contacted by a bank that wanted to sell the house for $8,000. So I addressed that, if they see anybody else coming back and looking for, at their house, to send them to me, because I want to know who this bank is and why they haven't been taking care of that property. But I can't, I can't believe that they own it, because it's been on the tax sale for at least 15 years.
Which house is it?
It's on, I don't even know their address. It's on Third and Cleveland though.
Okay. It's likely that it's a scam, unfortunately.
Yeah.
Any other council members? Thank you all. At this time, public portion is open for anyone that would like to speak on issues that you may have and you would like to bring to our attention at this time. I would ask if you would take the podium to my right, your left, in some essence. You have three minutes to speak at this time.
Good evening to the council and to the mayor. My name is Michael D. McGinnis, retired fireman, 31 years of service. You know, I didn't give my 31 years of blood, sweat, and tears to this city to see this fire department crumble like it's doing. I'm not gonna point the finger at anybody and blame anybody for what has occurred, but if, 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 if the city, and this goes back a little ways, if the city, and it just didn't start with this administration or any of you that's sitting up here, because I remember when the council was all men and we had all male mayors. So the problems has existed for a while. But if we had have put money into these buildings that we have now shut at firehouses that are closed and done, and remodeled it correctly, we wouldn't be having this problem. Second of all, if we had hired men and women as guys leave the job, we wouldn't be having this problem as a manpower issue. And I'm here to tell you, we've been skating and skating and skating in this city, and I don't know what is gonna have to take place for everybody to wake up and realize what I'm trying to tell you all. I've done this for 31 years, and I'm telling you, emergencies, this is how emergencies work. They can happen at any time. We train for them. They're not on the schedule when they happen. Okay, we'll wait till this emergency gets through, and then we'll have this emergency. When you on the other end of that phone call and you want somebody to come to rescue you and help you, whether it be gunshot victim, car accident, whatever it may be, you want somebody there like yesterday, okay? The response time I know has got to be lousy on the fire department now with all these stations closed. They gotta pass by closed firehouses to go to the cars. That's, this, we, we gotta do better than this guy, you know, ladies and gentlemen. We have to do better. And I'm not here to point, blame anybody for this, but we gotta, we gotta wake up. We dropping the ball on this. And people are gonna lose their lives in this city. It's gonna be summertime. It's gonna be a hot summer, you know? And firemen now know is just don't go to fires. We go to everything, gunshots, car accidents, car versus train, heart attacks, strokes. And when your loved one is laying down there on the ground, they want a quick response time. They want people there. They want somebody to show up to help. And we all have to travel in and out of this city, and anything can happen to any of us at any given time, and you want somebody there for you. So I'll be back. I'm not going anywhere. I'm retired now, and you're gonna see a lot more of me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm a little confused by the scheduling of the Redevelopment Commission in Myaco, because I called the Redevelopment Commission myself, and they said that that meeting is supposed to be June 6, tomorrow, Wednesday, at 4 o'clock, at 504 Broadway, Suite 200. Now, I don't know about the meeting on the 15th, but we need to have some clarification when they're gonna meet. Okay, the next thing on the issue I have to bring up is a... The next thing on the issue I have to bring up is during, talking about elections, during the general elections, voting hours should be increased during the time period on election day. Instead of closing at 6:00 PM, hours should be increased to stay open until 9:00 PM. And the other thing is, if the number of precincts have to be reduced in Gary, transportation accommodation should be considered for shut-ins or the elderly. We have no easy access to public transportation. It should be advertised and communicated. Okay. And we, as citizens of Indiana, should have open primary selections where we do have a choice for voting for the best candidate from any party rather than a closed primary election where we have to state our one-party affiliation. Primary, primary elections give us more opportunity to select candidates of our choice regardless of their party affiliation. After all, in the truest sense of the word, we are voting for the best ideas to be implemented to make our lives better. And for that reason, the candidates representing us act as that conduit. Another area of concern, campaign spending should be eliminated. A forum for some kind of debate system should be broadcast via TV, radio, or other electronic means with all the candidates who are running for each particular office having free and equal time to express their proposals to its citizens. And the media should give this time freely to those candidates. Concerning the city council, city common council, with respect with the meetings, we would like to request that acknowledgements, awards, accolades, and recognitions be placed on the agenda after the business of the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to give you a little clarification, tomorrow redevelopment, that's the normal meeting that's happening tomorrow. So I don't know why anyone told you about the special Maeco meeting. That's not going to take place, but it's the normal business of redevelopment tomorrow at 6:00 PM.
So, Mr. President?
Yes, sir. Yes. Next speaker.
Tyrone Jackson. I just want to say thank you to Councilwoman Sparks Wade. I've been following her for a minute. That's the reason I know about the fire department was hiring. I would like to say thank you to the mayor for doing whatever she did to get the six hired. Hopefully, I'm one of the six, even if I'm not, or even if I'm one of the six, I hope you keep, keep working and do whatever you can to hire the rest of the other firemen. And with all the jobs, I think it should be real important to hire young people like me, because it give, it give us hope. And all, the younger generation look up to my age group. They don't look up to y'all. They look up to me. My little cousin look up to me. So if he see me out there doing whatever it takes to get money, he gonna think it's okay. If he see me working a good, honest job to get money, he gonna do that. And if there's no jobs, or if y'all holding out on jobs, and it's people like me that want them, and then some people choose not to stay positive and go do what? People that like me, how I grew up, who I looked up to, if I go out and do what they did, the generation before, after me gonna go out there and do whatever I'm doing. So if I decide to say the fire department not working, blah, 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 I'm gonna go do what my daddy did, blah, blah, blah. My little cousin, he gonna say, I'm gonna go out there and get this money like my cousin doing. He not gonna look at y'all and say what they made, he gonna look at me, because I'm the generation before him. So I just want y'all to think about that. If y'all really want the city to get better, it starts in my age group, not the age group under me, not y'all. My age group is the one that the elementary kids, the middle school kids looking at, not y'all. But I appreciate the mayor, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Sparks Wade. Thank you.
Are they in that group too? Well, we do wish you good luck on that job with the city, and hopefully you are in that city. Councilman Porto want to know, how old are you? 24. Yeah, we in that group.
Good afternoon to the council and the public. I have a few concerned argument issues I have. Number one, if you make a call to your precinct committeeman five or six times, are they supposed to give you a call back to say later for that guy? I want to know. Do they supposed to give you a call back? I get no returns at all, okay? That's not fair to me, and I feel very disappointed. You know, even though who our precinct, who our precinct committee woman is, you don't lucky, election time, I go vote. I see Ms. Wade making her rounds, and I don't even know the precinct committee woman. I can't even get no answer. They don't know, and our councilwoman says she don't know who she is, so I don't know what's going, okay? So I haven't been getting you a statement saying, well, I haven't seen you around since you got a few things done, but I've been under the weather, and I'm still under the weather, okay? Had knee operation, been the man in Florida to take care of some business, and I'm back, and I can't do like I used to. But our lots on my area 23rd and Monroe Street, we have four lots. Grass as high as weeds, as high as jungle, okay? I see man-eating rats coming through there, and got little kids play in that area. They get bitten by one, somebody gonna be in trouble. And a couple of the lot belongs to the city. And I hope we could take care of that, and me and my councilwoman can get along a little better.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My lovely council people, I love you, and welcome from the 3rd District. And I just want to ask the question, how many of you belong to the YWCA? Could you just raise your hand? None? Well, the YWCA is for everybody, and it is in dire need. We need help. And I'm asking the city, me and Earlene Rogers and Karen Jones, she's the president, we're going to have a meeting, we're going to set up this meeting, like the second week in June. And I don't know if it'll be before the next meeting, but I will let Mary Brown, I got Sparks Wade's number, and I got Bruce's number. If it does come, I'm going to let you know. The building, it doesn't have a heating in the, in the pool area. I swim every day. And the last year, in the winter, I haven't been able to go, because the water was too cold, I can't get in that real cold water. And with George, he has a, a real good idea, and that, just, everybody just need to listen. And I found out that the building paid for, so we ought to be able to revenue some money and get some committees together to, to get some finances going for that community, because the place is nice, it just need a little help. You all have a good evening.
Thank you.
Good evening, Bill Coats, 31st District. I apologize, I didn't ID myself when I spoke on the one ordinance, I forgot to. Anyway, what I want to talk about is constitutional challenges. A lot of garbage is coming out of Washington, DC about the rights of the American people. When they established, with all their imperfections, the slaveholders that wrote that constitution, they had some very beautiful words. And if I would encapsulate American history, the struggle has been to make those beautiful words real for everybody, for the women, for labor, the laboring movement, for slavery. In other words, all these beautiful things about people being created equal, and we have a right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Well, our American experience has been nothing but a struggle that has involved the deaths of millions of people to get those words to mean something. Now, in 1798, John Adams was president, and he had a Congress that passed something called the Sedition Acts that made it a major crime to criticize the president of the United States. Dozens of newspaper reporters and editors were tossed in the jail for periods of time. It was part of something called the Alien Sedition Acts. Jefferson, who was his vice president, in those days, the winner got the most votes, and the loser got to, got to be vice president. Well, they changed the amendment a few years after that. But basically, my point is this: the Constitution recognizes two things. It recognizes as a business, the US Postal Service, and it recognizes freedom of the press and expression. And today, it's being challenged on all fronts, including by the internet. A whole lot of people say that they know what they're doing, and they're actually journalists or competent reporters, and they're just bloggers. Thing is, we have to use wisdom when this information comes down, and we have stuff coming out of the Congress in the White House, and I wonder if these folks know anything that are running this country about American history. The founders were deists. They didn't even believe in Jesus Christ. They believed in a deity. They used providence and destiny. That's why they separated church and state. They didn't want the religious wars in Europe over transubstantiation, whether the bread and body of Jesus would be consecrated as a physical reality or a spiritual reality. Millions of people were killed in Europe in those religious wars. So the founders separated church and state, where you had the freedom to worship or not to worship. We had all these freedoms established. We forget about them, and these people established them in the beginning of the country. And obviously, they don't, they're not teaching it in school, because Thomas Jefferson wrote a book called The Philosophy of Jesus Christ. I don't have time to go into history. I'm just saying right now, let's protect what rights we have left.
Good evening to the council, to the mayor and her absence, and to everyone that's joining us in person and by way of the media. I had the distinct, I want to say honor, but I'd rather choose the word privilege, going to the NERPC meeting at the Gary Metro Center. And I'm glad that Jim Nowacki was there. I'm glad that everybody council's there. Facebook Live part of it. But I was a little bit irritated, because I saw this one phrase for this 2050 plan, and it said that the people of our community was connected to the rivers, the park, and the lake. And it always irritates and upsets me when I see people pay humongous amounts of money to come up with a bunch of beautiful words that are just that, words, and not actions. So I asked them, I said, what about Deep River? The area that the Gary Community School Corporation used to use as an educational center for our young people? What are your plans for that? What's your ideas? What? And then I turned around and said, what about the Little Calumet River? Are there plans to test the fish that are in that river? Because a lot of people still fish in that area to see whether or not that fish is still safe, because some people are still eating that fish despite the flooding that's been done? And, you know, and have you had a conversation with Marshall Town about the, about the effects of the Little Calumet River? There. And then lastly, I asked, I said, well, you know, it was fantastic that you had a public meeting at Steel City Academy, and in my opinion, I think the only reason you had a meeting at Steel City Academy is because Steel City Academy has become so vocal publicly about environmental issues, and it was smart on your part to meet there. But what about Gary Community School Corporation students? What about meeting with them about Deep River? They might have some great ideas for that. What about meeting with Thea Bowman? They have a 4-H club. Did you know about that? You know? And I say that, I've said it before, and I'm going to say it again, the people in this city, in this community, need more attention about the plans everybody outside of this city has for us, and the conversations that are being had at their table that are excluding us. And I won't go into detail.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. Good evening.
Council, public. I could probably withstand here all day with complaints, but I won't do that. I've only got three I'd like to address. The first one is potholes. I live at 51st and Washington, and from 51st and Washington to Broadway, I can't get out. I mean, I can't even drive my motorcycle that way, because it's not potholes, it's craters. I saw where they did some patching on the east side of 51st with like an eight-man crew. I don't understand that, why it takes so many people on a crew to patch. They could separate the crews and have two crews patching. Code enforcement. There's an abandoned house on my street that the mayor looked at. They said that they was going to cite the person that owns the house. Nothing has been done yet. I mean, grass is as tall as the house. I used to cut it myself and my neighbor, and we got a cease and desist order from the owner of the property telling us not to cut it anymore. Well, I'm not going to bring up what the guy said, because I don't want to kind of slam anybody, but, you know, something need to be done with code enforcement. I mean, there's a house across the street from me, the grass is never cut. Some person bought it for taxes, but he's not cutting it. I mean, these are, I think, minor problems that could be addressed, but nobody is addressing. When we had Councilman Scott, he used to come to the neighborhood and listen to complaints. I'm not trying to slam the councilman that we have now, but I've never seen her in the neighborhood, never seen her, never had access to her, don't have phone numbers, don't have anything. So there's a lot of things that we could do, we could do better, you know, if we just take a little time to do it. And my last thing is these schools, with all this tall grass, how does the city expect, or the school, city, expect to get rid of these properties with the grass as tall as a building? They could at least cut the grass there. I mean, if they're not going to do anything else, the grass could be cut. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Ma'am.
And sir, can I, can I see you after the meeting? Sir? This way. This way.
Yes.
Can I see you after the meeting? Thank you.
Hello?
Yes.
This is my first meeting, but I came because I never seen her before, but that's the exact reason why I was coming, because I'm a member of the Y, and it's a nice place. There are a lot of children there, there are a lot of elderly there, and it just need a little help, just a little. Last year, the pipe fell into the pool while we were exercising, and we had to shut it down. You know, there are a lot of elderly people there to get in the pool, just to step in the pool, so a little tricky. I'm thinking if we might can go on some of these old schools, we need lockers, get some of these lockers out, put them inside of the water. I am an employee of US Steel. I've been there 11 years. I, for the life of me, don't know why the city is not using US Steel to help clean the city up. And I'll probably be coming to more meetings, because even though I'm not high up the total pope, I know a lot of people that's high up there. So there's also my parents, they live on 15th Avenue. It's only two houses on that block. But that area has become drug-infested now because of the overgrown grass and all the abandoned buildings. The entire block of Tyler Street is abandoned buildings, and then there's one house sitting behind behind Logan Park that is in existence. But other than that, I'm here because we really need to start getting on the ball. I mean, I thought honestly, when they found those 10 dead bodies, that we were gonna just like start tearing houses down. I noticed that on 17th and Pope, they tore a house down, and they left all the debris. And then they left, "Oh, yeah, take a drive." 17th and Pope, right on the corner, they tore a house down, the debris is still there. And in my mind, why tear the house down? I mean, it was better standing up. So you guys gotta get out and start driving in that midtown area. It really looks bad. It really does. And I'm here because we have elderly people. You guys got parents. I don't want my parents living in this area, but they can't afford to move, and I can't afford to move them. So I'm just asking, at least go over there, cut the grass, see what I'm talking about. Go to the Y, see what this lady is talking about. They just need a little bit of help. They honestly need, need just a little bit of help there. Well, they do, I mean, you guys, I know what, look, we talked about it over and over again, but we're not asking for a lot. I mean, they, they go and they work out. I'm happy about that. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. My name's Jim Nowacki, and I live in the 2nd district. I came very close this evening to not take advantage of the public comment portion of the meeting today, and the reason was that so many speakers before me had addressed issues that I've been addressing at the, in the public, public speaking portion of the meeting for, for decade, for a decade, for more than a decade now, talking about the need to, for, to execute simple things efficiently, providing basic services in the city, that it's wonderful that grant money becomes available so we get distracted with a lot of nonsensical, non-performing grant activities that nobody understands a single thing about, and the money just seems to get spent and very little to show for it. And then we get distracted by projects, things such as the baseball stadium, which is, of course, going to be the panacea for the city, $55 million. It was going to generate economic activity. And, and then it goes on and on, whether it's the Genesis Center, whether it's the Hudson Campbell Center, whether it's now spending more money on the baseball stadium, the, the art house grant money. We took a $4 million brand-new building. We collected one month's rent, and then the building sat vacant until the Astor Gates came in, and, and the silliness that goes on there on a regular basis, we all take bowels for it. But in the meantime, while all of this money gets spent, and while we get distracted and get, and, and, and become involved in the photo ops for, for these kind of programs, the entire city is tanking. You know, if we're not providing basic services like police and fire in a understandable fashion, I mean, if you're, and you're hearing it at these meetings, if we're not keeping the streets well swept, if we're not cutting grass and maintaining our parks, if we're not doing all of the things that everybody expects the city government to do, in other words, we can go out and volunteer and do all this work ourselves, but then what the heck are we paying you guys to do? What the heck are we paying the city staff to do? And when we have a park department that has three or four employees to do maintenance, you know that's not enough. When we've got a street sanitation department with a few employees, we know that's not enough. We've got to prioritize, and we've got to do better, make fewer plans, but execute the, the needs more directly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cliff Caldwell, 6th district. I just want to briefly touch on a public safety issue, which I'm pretty sure you all guys see all the Family Dollars that pop up on every corner, and I believe the one, the old Walgreens at Fifth and Wild Bash, you're looking at that one, they're about to open one up at Fifth and Jerry. They're a problem because they attract armed robberies. I'm a police officer, I know it. We respond to them all the time. And the summer's about to start, all these armed robberies are coming out. Family Dollar has a policy where they don't employ security, even though that they're a high-risk business. And you can get the records from the, I was hoping the police chief would still be here. You can get the records. That's where, that's where your crime is deriving from, the armed robberies. They get the money, then they go out and they buy the drugs with the money, then it turns into a shooting, turns into a homicide. I would hope that maybe the, the chairperson of the Public Safety Committee can spearhead, can spearhead this and get some ordinance requiring them to have some type of security there on, on their premises, and that will really cut down on the crime especially. I know they hit the ones in Glen Park a lot, and then the ones also on Fifth Avenue. Now they're about to open up another one on Fifth and Jerry. And, I mean, they get these, these robberies for next to nothing, and then they, they refuse to, to hire security on the premises. I think that's the problem. They just popping up all over, and we have to get, we need to get some ordinances in the city to kind of, kind of put a halt to. I know we need businesses, but we need good businesses. We don't need businesses that are gonna bring a criminal element with them. They, they have a lot of loitering that goes on in there. I mean, it, it, yes, in my, where I live at is two Family Dollars, and it's always loiter. I don't go in there. If I gotta go to Family Dollar, I'll drive to Maryville. I, I, this is, I'm just being, because Maryville actually regulates the businesses, and Maryville has a compliance officer that goes in there and will make sure everything's up to, to compliance. So that's just why I briefly want to touch on, hopefully, Councilwoman Caldwell can look into that, as chairperson of the Public Safety Committee. Thank you.
Seeing no one else, public portion now closed. Just like to thank everyone that came out on tonight and shared in the public portion. Your thoughts that you have shared with us, we will take very close consideration to what we can do about those things. One thing I will touch on, well, maybe a few things I will touch on, is definitely about the financing and direction that we're moving this city in. We know there's a problem with our finances, and the way that we are doing things is not a way, obviously, a lot of us are really displeased with. And we want to see something where our seniors are taking care and our youth are being looked out for. I heard a lot of that this week in just the past two meetings I've been in, where, with Councilwoman Caldwell, we, the seniors talked about being secure in the facility that they are in, making sure the lights is taken care of, the falling gutters are put up on the pavilion, just basic things. And these are services that we should be delivering to the citizens of this community. If we can't open up all the pavilions, let's get a number that we can manage, and let's manage it well. That's just where I feel about it. Let's get to that number where we can manage it and manage it well, everyone feels safe inside of that number. I know, I was just asking Councilwoman Wade about the, the Y. The Y is a non-for-profit, but we need to see if that's a facility where our seniors are going, and we have a nice gathering of our residents are going, we need to see how can we make sure things are safe, the railings are there, pipes are not falling down, or no one there. That's a very much of a safety hazard there. And we have to invest in our youth. We have to invest in our youth. Give them some activities to keep them busy. I mean, you look at other communities around us, and, and I, sometimes I hate to even compare us with other communities, but sometimes you have to. You look at other communities, they have a whole layout of what's gonna take place in the summer for our youth. And I could tell you sitting on this council, I can't name five things that's gonna take place with our youth, let alone adults inside the community. But we need to have a plan where we have something in place for the youth that's gonna take place, and make sure our seniors are taken care of inside of our city. But definitely with my, my council, I want us to start taking a look at our 2019 budget, how we want this budget to look, and the recommendation that we want to give to the administration on what we want, how we want to steer this city here in a different direction that we're, we're steering in it to, because you hear from, time and time again, from the public, people are not happy within the direction that we're going to, and let's not just sit back and play like we got our hands on our ears and we don't hear the concerns. Let's start doing something about it, and let's get them a 2019 budget that everyone can be happy and start seeing more progress happen inside our city. With simple things, with the grass being cut, simple things, with going inside our pavilions, and making sure that proper lighting, the security is in place, let's just do that for the citizens. They deserve it. If there's anything else, nothing else. I have an entertaining motion for adjournment. We now set adjourned. We will be back at City Hall at our next council meeting. God bless you all.